Roll call, Jared.
Tammy Bynne?
Here.
Cinda Brode?
Here.
Julia Parky-Kukera?
President.
Mr. Harlick?
Here.
Mr. Kerr?
President.
Mrs. Leaper? Dr. Rig?
Here.
Dr. Schaefer?
Here.
Mr. Schroed?
Here. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Thank you all for coming out. I do not have a board president message. And it looks like we have one person signed up for public comment. John Chalk? Okay, John, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I've been a homeowner for a long time. And for the last 22 years, White Township just stepped the road here. Prior to this evening, I never felt the urge to attend a school board. However, things have changed quite drastically over the last few years. The culture that I grew up in come under attack. It seems to me that our youth are the most vulnerable related to these forces who want to have their way. Now, I hear a lot of good things about Indiana School District. And every now and then a few bad things. Recently, someone shared these flyers with me. What does aromatic mean? What does lesbian mean? Seems if there's a club within the high school called Love is Love are holding meetings in the school auditorium. Out of curiosity, I'd like to know if you're allowing this to happen, they have the board approval to have these meetings.
We wait for you to finish your comment before we respond.
Well, that's question one.
Yes, sir.
Has the board approved these meetings? Question two. Are any Bible or religious-related clubs or meetings allowed by school? Utilizing school space or resources? And that's the end of my questions.
Thank you, John. Next is the, we don't have an SGA. Do you want to meet with?
But yeah, I think we deserve some time. I know we don't engage and entertain with the public at the board meeting, but I'd like to give him some time with Mr. Heinrich. Mr. Heinrich can walk through, answer some of those questions, explain, and really have a conversation because I appreciate you coming out tonight, sir. I think you wrote some time with, okay if I say with our director, Ben?
Outside the.
You go to his office, sir. Is that okay? Thank you.
Well, I know.
Okay, sorry, okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we don't, we don't have our SGA representative tonight. Superintendent's report.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I'll make it brief, but a couple of really nice things to highlight. Number one, I got to go to Mini-Thon. The students raised nearly $65,000 and it was a great time. It was fun because myself, Mr. Heinrich, and Mr. Crowder and Mrs. Orchak, the kids put us right to work since we got there. We were the, keeping score of the volleyball game. So it was nice to be around kids. It was nice to see them enjoying themselves. Ms. Duffy and every other teacher, please, there's so many that I couldn't remember who was all there. Just a really brilliant job, but most importantly, the kids just did a great job. So in my letter, I'm sending home to parents, there's a little bit of infographic about the great work they have done. Additionally, we have some students who are digital media students placed in a PIA event where they, every year they do a Don't Let Pain Become a Killer PSA video contest. We had several kids place in that. In particular, we had Caroline Albert and Alexandra Ball and Arden Nederhizer, who was chosen as the run-up 500 winner of the event. So we had a lot of kids competing in that. We're quite proud of the work they've done there. Additionally, as you know, we discussed at one of our last committee meetings, meetings, changes to synchronous learning. I sent an email to our families, but it was again over-communicating about what in my superintendent's report. I have a flyer about our summer camp that will be held June 8th through July 8th here, coming up fast and quick. As you know, that all expenses are covered through ESRS, and last year we had about 500 students attend. And then we also have an update to our parents about our health and safety plan. Tonight on item 5.3, we'll be delivering, discussing some changes to health and safety plan. And we wanted to communicate with our families once our decision is made by the board, communicate with them accordingly. And the last thing I have in my superintendent's report is just a little flyer about some vacancies we have here in the district. As you know, we have a very well-rounded community with people who are, you know, serving a lot of different roles. So we just want to communicate with our families, help spread the word about some of the vacancies that exist here in the district. And as you know, the district, the accounting, or I'm sorry, the Commonwealth is facing, facing a shortage of number of certified teachers. So the more we can do to get out the good word about some of the vacancies available, we'd like to do that as well, sir.
Okay, thanks, Mike. Ron, it's your turn with the solicitor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Actually, I wanted to key in on something that we haven't done here yet, but because I'm able to provide it as part of my report, if you go to 5.3, the Health and Safety Plan. So one of the new requirements that I discussed previously with Act 65, this was an added agenda item, so you can see the asterisks that were put on there. So because of that, when we go to approve, we have to make mention as to why it's showing up as a late addition, explain the rationale and reasoning, make sure the board is okay with that, and have some verbose conversation as to, from the superintendent's to why. And then we can modify the agenda to add it. I only share that because one of the nice things about Indiana, you are simultaneously posting. So typically you have to post afterwards within 24 hours to show that it's been updated. Here, we did it simultaneously. So the moment it showed up, all the packets have it online. If you pull it up, it shows it right now. So the public's aware that it's coming out, but I just wanted to reiterate Act 65 because it was a little bit of a change in the sunshine.
So when we approve the agenda for this evening, we're approving this 5.3 change, or does it need to be approved separately?
We should ask that the agenda be amended to include section, to include 5.3 as an item. And then a second, and then have Mr. Bukovic explain why it showed up as a late addition.
Do we do that under 3.2, or do we do it under?
3.2, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, for approval of the agenda.
Okay, so is everybody clear on that? Okay?
That's, that's all. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. There are no presentations this evening. Next is the approval of the minutes and the agenda. Okay, does anybody wish to amend the agenda? To include 5.3? Julia moved to amend?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Mike, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. President. What we did here is we added the Health and Safety Plan update be provided to the board for consideration tonight, and the main reason is one of timeliness. Wednesday is the start of the, is the last day of Thursday night weeks, Thursday starts the fourth night weeks. We thought it would be well-received and prudent to make any change to Health and Safety Plan, starting with the fourth quarter. You have the right to say no. We can revisit this in April, but we thought with the transition of, and the grading period, we wanted to make the change. As you know, this board's been asking us to go to return to normal, the best we can, in a safe environment. I think our data speaks to the safety of where we're at, but we thought the timing of this was making sense to do it at the start of the fourth quarter. So what's specifically enumerated in the changes in the Health and Safety Plan, Mr. President, is number one, with your permission, I would no longer be emailing families a weekly update. As you recall, when it first started, they were, I was emailing them three, four, five times a week, and then over the last two months, it went to about once a week. With only having one case per week on average, maybe two, I think it's something that they can go now, go to the COVID dashboard. One thing we don't want to do is overwhelm and burden our families with unnecessary email. I would defend all the emails, the nearly 200 emails we sent during COVID, because at that time, numbers were high. I think there's a lot of urgency, and I think there's a lot of concern, and I know you value transparency. As the numbers have subsided greatly, we think that allowing the dashboard to still be updated is a good way to meet that goal of transparency, but not inundate with our families as far as the emails. Additionally, Mr. President, in the changes we made, there will be some changes into the number of threshold when universal masking would be required. As we looked at some of our data, we see the substantial decrease in number of cases in the district. We'd like to raise those thresholds, and that's enumerated in the plan as well as in the parent letter. And then additionally, what else we'd like to do is to no longer serve as the point-of-contact tracers for Department Health. As you know, we were good stewards and neighborly with the Department Health when the pandemic was at an all-time high, which put a lot of work and pressure on our nurses who have done, I don't want to say admirable, amazing job handling this pressure and handling, guiding us through this. Our contention, our position, our hope is that as the numbers have subsided, the Department Health can take back that responsibility as serving as the lead contact tracer. We also then enumerate the fact that we would accept home tests at our previous plan. We really didn't call out that, that portion about accepting home test results, and we'll now do that. There's a plethora of tests available, both in the private sector and the public sector. We still offer testing, but really the big switches is no more letters being sent home, and the Department Health taking back the responsibility of contact tracing, and then the change into the thresholds that would require, when masking would be required. I provided you this information on or at the early beginning of March to give you, you know, several weeks to think about this and consider it. It also gave you time to see what our data was looking like. And as you see, we've been pretty stable, consistent. We didn't completely take all the safeguards, one, because we still have to have a health and safety plan. And two, I don't know what the future's going to hold, but this allows us to now start the fourth quarter in a much step towards normalcy rather than doing it next year, sir.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion of the board on the amendment?
The only thing I'll add, I did meet with the nurses. We had a conversation with the nurses about this, allowed them to have some input because ultimately, they're the ones that are running the play. So they are in agreement with the work we did, we came up with as well.
Okay. Nothing heard? Those in favor of amending the agenda to include 5.3, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, so the agenda is now amended to include 5.3. And do we have any questions, comments, or discussion on the minutes or the agenda? Quick question from you, sir?
Yes, do you have text of 5.3?
It's on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda. I got this email, this email to us.
That's correct, that's correct, sir. That's exactly why I described Act 65, why we had to do what we did and post it. Correct, yeah, that is the reasoning for that. You should, I will say, it should have been updated when you received it out here, though.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you said you got the email.
Okay, so we have the agenda moved in second. Any questions, comments further on the agenda of the minutes? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, we have the minutes approved and the agenda. So it looks like I'm up first. We did have a meeting last Tuesday at the ICTC. Primarily, we discussed the budget at that public meeting, and we'll be getting a copy of that budget here here shortly for our review and our approval of it. And the other thing that happened at the ICTC was there were a number of routine personnel. Some people retired, some people were hired, that sort of thing. So that's the extent of the ICTC. Tammy, what is going on up at Aaron?
Right now, we had a meeting on March 15th. There is going to be a career initiative pathways with ICTC and Aaron. They're going to be doing professional development. They're having an IUP online career day on March 30th. It's going to be on the, on website and on Facebook. It'll also be recorded if somebody wants to view it later. Also, they're having just a wonderful outreach program going on with the accelerated, they're doing also accelerated learning, PDE training in the IU. They're going to be addressing learning loss. And then they also had the usual hirings and retirements and so on and so forth. So they're doing great things.
Okay, and you're also up for outreach?
Yes, yes. We had a wonderful meeting last week. We are doing great with the progress for the rewards for the kids getting on the radio. Kids will be third graders, primarily be focused on the radio, and we're working on trying to get that all coordinated. The junior high and senior high are already doing radio interviews. And the newspaper is doing student spotlight, and we're going to try and make sure that that keeps going. The school psychology interns are proposing some research projects to address and see how the loss of, how the remote learning is affecting the social and emotional needs. And we're asking the committee, the board, the district to sign off on that request. Needs board approval. I think we're going to put it into the next regular meeting, Mike, I believe.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Also, we want to thank Todd Marino for helping us with the PBIS, with the student spotlight. He's been a great help to that. And Amy O'Neil is going to help coordinate, and Mike Travis is going to assist with the transportation. And we decided that we were going to look at the competition with contests and competitions next month, next meeting, as well as waiting for interest groups until the next meeting. We also looked at the, having a store for a school. What would, how would you call it, Mike? The school?
Online school store. We were looking at some different options for that to help promote the Indiana brand. So that's something we're vetting out, yes, ma'am?
Yeah, it looks really good, and someone had a wonderful idea of having it as a limited-time sale. Where, you know, like only two weeks, you get two weeks to get a bumper sticker for Christmas or whatever. So that's how we've been doing, and we're looking at feedback collaboration subgroups possibly in the future. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Tammy. Tom, academic and extracurricular, your turn.
No committee report. I'd like to move 5.2. Based on recommendation of administration, the board authorized the superintendent to submit to the Department of Education a request under Act 80 to cancel June 1, 2023, half-day and an act 80 days. Need a second?
Second.
Mike, explain?
Just another error we caught that we're just cleaning up on the, on the calendar for 2022, 23.
Thank you.
Okay, questions, comments, discussion? Those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries.
I have another motion, 5.3 Health and Safety Plan, based on the recommendation of the administration, the board approves revised Health and Safety Plan as submitted.
Second.
Is there anything we need to do on this? We're good to go?
Yeah, Mike gave a verbose, understanding.
Verbos.
Okay, so do you want to verbose further, or?
But I think I'm okay, sir. Well, honestly, I know you value communication. We'll get this superintendent's report out. Soon as we're done here, I'll send it out, make the families aware. We got some time, so it's not a stringent approach. If anything, it's relaxing, so I don't think it should cause any concern or uproar, but we do have responsibility to make families aware of it. We do want to monitor it. So I think it's pretty, it's a step in the right direction, sir.
Questions, comments from the board members? Nothing heard? All those in favor, say aye. Motion carries. You're done, okay.
I'll give you the report after.
Cinda, your turn with policy and personnel.
And we have not had a meeting since the last board meeting. I'd like to, we've, we've got some resignations. I'd like to take that as a separate motion. The rest of them I'd like to take as consent items. And we can have a little bit of a description about the after-school math and literacy and the summer school, maybe, Mike, during the discussion. So I'm going to hold out 6.2, 6.3, 6.4, and 6.5. I'd like to take those as consent items, sir.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
Yep, if I can, Mr. President. What you're doing here is you're authorizing after-school math and literacy tutoring program. As you know, this is through ESRS funds. We talked about it at the academic committee meeting. We told you we were going to have to bring these names retroactively to come through and approve them. So we're just following through and doing that, so these people are officially appointed. Rob and his team and the teachers have done an incredible job really coming up with this on the fly, making it work for our kids. Like anything else, there's room to improve, but we're appreciative of everyone's flexibility because this is a nice service to the kids. I ultimately made the decision, we could have used this next year or this year. My thought was get it done before PSA testing comes as a final push to help those kids who may be struggling as we enter in the fall. Kids are involved in still so many activities, I thought it made sense now. So that motion is just moralizing what we previously discussed and you authorized me to do since our last time together. In 6.4, due to the leadership of this board, you asked us to develop a summer school programming free, no charge to our families that combine both accelerated learning as well as some summer fund. We are just continuing to have work, but we need to start the process to hire individuals for, to work the summer camp. So 6.4 authorizes us to begin that search process. As you know, last year, we had a majority of the people being internal staff members, but we also had some external, and that includes a partnership with the YMCA to help oversee some of the activities. We had a planning meeting with Ms. Thasson and some other people who came in, gave us some input, but with some glows and some grows. Areas we want to fix, we'll present that at Mr. Harley's committee meeting next Monday. But for right now, we need to start the clock ticking as far as getting applicants for positions, Mr. Cinda.
Okay, Tom?
Yeah, I'd like to speak in favor of both of these things. Getting help to our kids in math today is better than tomorrow. So, so, and I also like to make sure that this is useful, and if it is, then repeatable. The summer school, we saw maintaining academic achievement and not accelerating academic achievement for almost 500 kids last summer. Phenomenal program put together on a wing and a prayer. Okay, you have a little bit more time to do it. Let's get the right people in the building and do it again.
Yes, sir.
And maybe we can make this as a permanent thing.
We're going to try, sir, yes, sir.
I understand, but, but, you know, it's exciting to me to see something that we've tried to do for a decade to keep that summer slip, slide back out of, out of our academics. Both of these things are phenomenal. So thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions, comments, or discussion on these three motions? Nothing heard? All those in favor, say aye. Motion's carrying.
6.2, that the board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Joyce Shirley, Administrative Assistant, effective June 10, 2022, due to retirement, and authorizes the administration to post-advertise an interview for this position. That the board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Karen Schreckengost, Para-educator, effective the last day of the 2021-2022 school year, due to retirement, and authorizes the administration to post-advertise an interview for this position.
Second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on these two? You separated them out for a reason.
I did, I did, and it's because I assumed that since they're both retirement, and I do recognize the one name as being a longtime employee of the district, I wanted to make sure that we thank them for their service and wish them all future happiness in retirement, and hope they get to retire.
Very good, Cinda. Okay, questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Terry, Looks Like Buildings and Ground is next.
Okay. First thing up is committee meeting report. We did have a monthly committee meeting on March 21st. There's one agenda item on there, and that's on the agenda for tonight is the bidding for the East Pike Roof Mechanical Work. And then we had several non-agenda items, and the first was an update on the Eisenhower remodel renovation project. Second was an East Pike, an update on the East Pike renovation project, the old office space. Then we discussed the HVAC system in the, again, the East Pike Old Office Base. We then brainstormed potential uses for Forest Man after Eisenhower is reopened, and that was for joint public or private partnership or any public use entity. Then we got into just reviewing quickly the capital improvement estimate. We'll do that each month from here on out as those estimates for the projects that are in the pipeline will continue to change. We briefly discussed the Constellation ESCO report. We discussed the White Township amphitheater idea. And the last thing on there was air quality sensors on the JCI system. Next up is the Eisenhower renovation update, and we'll carry this on each meeting until that project's completed. A little bit of update so far, we did hold a meeting. The admin team, myself, met with Bucard Horn, our architect, on March 23rd just to further define the scope of the project and getting them headed in the right direction because they're starting to, they start, already started to develop some conceptual schemes for adding the classrooms and adding the multipurpose room and redoing the old office. We made quite a bit of headway. They come out of there with pretty much all the questions in their head that they had. We have future, we have, I think, three meetings set up so far in April to keep the process moving. They are on schedule so far. They're probably even a little bit ahead of schedule. And then at next month's, April's Building and Grounds meeting, there will be some items on there for discussion, and an example is whether we want air conditioning in that renovation in the elementary school. There's just going to be that, that we're going to bring to committee in April. Tom, you have your hand raised before I go on to the regular.
No, that was mistaken.
Okay. Okay, moving down to, I think we can take 7.3, 7.4, and 7.5 as consent items, if that's okay. We'll fill in the, the name of the contractor and the amount whenever I read the motion.
Second.
Sure, go.
Okay. First one is 7.3 additional bus contractor that based on the recommendation of the administration, the district contracts with Kreis Transportation for an estimated 40 athletic transportation runs at an estimated cost of $33,250 for the 2021-2022 school year. 7.4 approval of bus drivers that in accordance with the recommendation of the bus contractor and Department of Education regulations, following bus drivers be approved. Eric Wingart Jr., Kelly Wood, James Flick, Rachel Wingart, Kami Nar, and Timothy Kreis. 7.5 East Pike Mechanical Roof Bid that based on the recommendation of the committee, bid for the mechanical work related to the East Pike Roof replacement, we award Montgomery Brothers Plumbing and Heating LLC in the amount of $358,000.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in, in second. Questions, comments, or discussion on these three motions?
Jared, on 7.3, how does the $33,000 nest into our existing bus contract? Is this an additional fund, or is this, is this similar moving function, one bus company do another?
It would be moving a portion that's because this is a smaller contract with a different company, it's a little more expensive than what we would have paid to our current bus contractor. But because the need is there in our bus contractor right now, we've been reaching out to other companies to just try and find anybody who can help with the athletic runs. This is one company who can. But like I said, the.
The existing bus company does not have manpower to do this.
Yes, they're struggling to get their buses back in time to do some of these runs. Their elementary bus drivers can't be back in time to get the high school and junior high kids where they need to be for athletic events, so they just don't have enough extra drivers to do this couple of runs, so.
That wasn't a problem in the winter because the events were later.
Yes.
I do think we need to make a point that this is primarily driven by the lack of qualified CDL drivers. That is something that is essentially a nationwide issue, not just for buses, but for trucks and, and that sort of thing. But that's the, if we can get more people to drive the buses for. if we can get more people to drive the buses for us and get the qualifications, then we could, we'd have some additional options.
Even van drivers, I can tell you, Mike Travis, our transportation director was out driving van this morning, doing a run. So we are really pulling anybody who can to drive vans, buses, whatever we need, so.
Well, there's an opportunity here for you.
When I retire. When I retire.
The only thing I'll add to is seven point five, and we clarified this at the committee meeting last week. This is for the work on the main part of East Pike building in preparation for the roof replacement, is that correct, Jared?
Yes, sir, this is just the the school part of the East Pike building here.
Yeah, and it's not the HVAC system.
Three fifteen, thank you.
Okay. Further questions, comments, or discussion on? Yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry, Cindy.
Just to be clear about the additional bus contractor. With the contractor that we have now, we pay them per run, we don't have a flat rate that we've paid them already that they're, they've committed to doing this, so just so the public knows you're not paying any extra.
Yes, ma'am, we're not paying double.
Correct.
They're not getting, they would get paid if they would have done the runs.
What they get paid, what they, the actual work they do, they get paid.
Yes.
Do we get any state reimbursement on this?
No, no, I thought I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, further questions, comments, or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Okay, motions carry, Julia, it's your turn.
Thank you, Walter. The Audit and Finance Committee did have a meeting tonight for exactly one hour, we were on schedule. We have, first of all, the board's delighted with the Giant Eagle Company for their twenty twenty-two feeding school kids program donation, I think it's just wonderful. Tonight, we will be going over the food service budget, which we have to approve, there's been a very, there's been an increase between five and ten cents for meals, we will be going back for school meals, we will be going back to a pre-COVID meal stance. I'm going to let Jared, you talk about that in just a minute to give us the highlights of the budget. We're very pleased that in terms of our real estate liens, we're having a pretty good year in terms of percentages. There is a handout that we received that shows that percentage of delinquency is considerably lower, we haven't had it so low since seventeen eighteen of three point two percent, so we're, this year, nine hundred thirty thousand one seventy-four dollars. And then that those were for the real estate liens, taxes. Then we also have a motion on both the food prices and the food service budget. I'd like to point out also, we had a review of the SIR funding. And it's really been remarkable, total SIR funds were about five, a little over five and a half million, about five point seven million over a three-year period, we have set asides that are separate from that, but we've done a pretty good job of out, Jared, you've done a nice job of outlining where all of the expenditures have gone since twenty twenty, and it goes through twenty twenty-three, twenty-four, it's got three colors on it, so recommend that the public who's watching this on YouTube take a look at it, because it really does explain how the federal funding worked. And we're very grateful for it, it's meant, it's given us a lot of opportunity in the district. So we looked at the budget, we're going to have a budget workshop sometime before the next meeting, or maybe shortly after, not on a Monday night, so that we can, so we'll get some dates for that, so that we can really get into the fine tuning of the budget, because we'll be voting preliminary budget, we vote, or
This first meeting in May, the second Monday in May.
So we want to be well prepared for that, and then, of course, the final votes at the end of June. So Jared, can you run us through the the food service budget, we're running a little skinny on the profit, but we think we have a pretty pretty good budget here to look at, and then talk to us a little bit about the reason for the price increases.
Yeah, absolutely. Food service budget is what I call returning to pre-COVID, where we are going back to a, basically, students go back to a pay reduced or free lunch status. For the past two years, really, I guess, two and a quarter, we have been running, all students receive free breakfast and lunch regardless of their status on on the paid free reduced scale. Right now, that waiver ends at our last student day, which I believe is June second or June fourth. And we will go back as of right now in next school year to the other status, unless USDA is able to issue a waiver for that, which they need Congress to give them the ability to do that, there is a lot of advocacy going on right now to do that. But there is no guarantee, so the board needs to pass a food service budget, for which I need to submit to PDE and get approval by June thirtieth. It can sometimes take a while, that's why we're doing it now as part in March to get in their wells before the June thirtieth deadline. If the waiver does, would happen to pass, then this budget really does become null and void. And everybody would be free if the waivers passed. The small increase in the student paid lunches and breakfast as well as the adult lunch and breakfast is due to just the fact, as we all see, inflation in food. We, over the past year, have seen almost a ten percent increase in our cost of food. So we need to help try and recover that a little bit, as our food service budget is not a profit generating business, it, we do try and break even, which is basically what this budget does, we're looking at a possible profit of around five thousand dollars, which in my mind, a one point two million dollar budget is pretty much a break even status, so.
It's a nice cushion, just a little bit of a cushion for us, just in case.
It still does leave us, even if we come in hard times next year, participation isn't quite what we thought. We do have a balance in food service to cover any loss that we may have, so I think it's a fair and reasonable, we haven't raised increases, or we haven't seen increases in lunch and breakfast prices for a couple of years. And the federal government, by running the national school lunch program, does require us to at least attempt to keep up with the free reimbursement that we'll be going back to in twenty-three, twenty-three, so that's it's been, by keeping up, it doesn't say how we have to keep up, it just has to show that we are attempting that, which I think a small increase does show that we're trying to keep up with the free and reduce, or the free reimbursement amount, so.
Yeah, and the federal government really does reimburse as well for the lunches.
They have, yes, especially in the past couple of years.
It's just been, so I want to compliment the food service staff, you, Jared, and Chartwell for getting us through the worst part of COVID, just, it's just remarkable what the district accomplished with those meals, so thank you very much. If there are no questions, I think we can probably, on, for Jared or me, I think we, or whomever, we can probably take all of these.
Mike's nodding his head, so go for it.
As consent items, with a special shout out to Giant Eagle for the six thousand one hundred nineteen dollar donation. I guess there's a difference.
Yeah, there is difference.
Is the Giant Company Martin's?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, thank you, Martin. I'm getting a call about that tomorrow, I'm sure. Giant Company, so I moved that eight point two, that's the donation from the Giant Company, eight point three, the listing of the real estate taxes, eight point four, the food service prices for twenty-two, twenty-three, and the eight point five, the food service budget be approved as moved, second.
Moved in second. Questions, comments, or further discussion on these items? All those in favor, say aye. Those opposed? Motion's carry. Okay, we're down to the closing. There is no discussion item tonight. Public comment on agenda items? Nobody online has raised their hand. We did have an enclosure. We also had an executive session before the meeting, and we'll have another one after. We will not return to a public session after that executive session. Ron, do you want to cover for the benefit of the press what?
Sure, the one previous this meeting was for pending litigation regarding the Eisenhower building, and the one after the meeting will be for the teacher negotiation discussion.
Okay. Our next board meeting will be April the eleventh at seven PM for general purposes. We have a academic committee meeting on April the fourth at five thirty, policy and personnel on April the eleventh. And I need a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned.
Forty minutes, so I guess we started.